We're going to move forward to the Cook and County Road Gwinner Project. That is a mouthful. So, yes, sir. Go ahead and start.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
It's good to see you all again.
You, too.
I'm doing very well, thank you. I'll get to lower this correctly. I am here to both give an update on the Cook and County Road project as well as to ask...
We just want to know who you are.
Oh.
For those at home.
Thank you very much.
We all know who you are.
I'm just racing through the presentation. I'm Mark Wamsley from Kestrel Land Trust, and I'm from Florence, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
So, again, I'm here to update you on the Cook and County Road project as well as to ask the Select Board's formal support and cosponsorship as we move ahead to the next step of submitting our application to the Community Preservation Committee. There have been some new developments of the project lately, a little bit of a bump, but then it's really raced ahead, and it's looking good right now. The first big development was we had a new appraisal for the property come in, and the appraisal actually went up from $1,050,000 to $1,160,000. That was mostly because of the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw in town. We thought it might go down with an affordable lot, but because of the density bonus that goes along with the bylaw, it would actually allow 12 houses to be built on those 25 acres instead of 10, as originally thought. The core area of that, though, which is wonderful and really helped move things forward, is the family has decided not to ask for the amount of the new appraisal. They have agreed to sell at a bargain sale of the original $1,050,000, so it would be a bargain sale of $110,000. And that was really wonderful, because it allowed me to produce, if they're not the final numbers, they are close to the final numbers, which I've submitted to the Board tonight. And, again, when you look at the total cost of the project, $110,000 in an over-a-million-dollar project, I think that's significant, especially when you look at the amount that each community will spend, hopefully, and the state will commit. Southampton would be looking in the range of $300,000. $110,000 is a third of what the community's contribution would be. Obviously, it's not in place of that, but just in terms of equivalent, the family is really putting in here and committing themselves to this project, which we're really happy to see. Of course, with the numbers that I provided to you this evening, there's a variation there just because, again, we'd be applying to state grants, we'd be applying to two state grants, the land grant and the drinking water supply grant. We can't get both of them, or if we got both, we couldn't take both of them. But, of course, the cap on land is a little higher. With the $400,000 maximum, the drinking water has a $350,000 maximum. So, I have to provide a range of potential costs for all the community involved, just based on that. But, again, at this point, I think fittingly, the land is in Southampton, and Southampton is going to be hopefully sending this project on to the next stage of its journey. I was just talking with Barbara Laflambeault before the meeting started, and she reminded me that the family first got a letter from the city of East Hampton with interest about protecting this property all the way back in 1987. So, that's really when the project began. I had a lot more hair back then, if I was trying to think back. So, again, the other communities, mainly the city of East Hampton, is pretty much waiting in the wings. They're waiting to hear the decision of both the residents and the elected leaders of Southampton and what they say before they officially put the project before their own Community Preservation Committee. But they are willing and ready to do that once Southampton speaks. And, again, we're very hopeful. I spoke with Virginia A. Hart before, and the money is in the Community Preservation budget in the town of Southampton. It is there, so it could be used for this project. Also, the project really fits many of the goals that the town of Southampton has said, and the town of Southampton's residents have spoken about in the past, both in the 2008 Open Space and Recreation Plan as well as in the 2013 Master Plan. The project really gives something for everyone. Some of the goals mentioned were the protection of farmland and promotion of agriculture, the protection of drinking water, which is really, I think, the centerpiece of this project. That's why East Hampton was interested in it all the way back in 1987. Again, this is over the sole source aquifer for the city of East Hampton. This is where they get all their water from, so the water quality is very important, certainly. Also, the community members from Southampton have mentioned the importance of keeping the rural character of the town. This contributes to that. A lot of cars drive past this parcel, and right now, it's a historic house and a farm and forest. It could turn into 12 houses. And I think you also can't overlook the importance that the town residents have also said they would like increased access to open space in the town. This parcel abuts the Southampton Wildlife Management Area, 148 acres altogether. This could provide parking. It could provide another recreational opportunity for them, so it is really good value added to this project, I think, for the town. Two other points that I'd like to make. This is a kind of a one-shot deal. I mean, every actor involved here, between the town of Southampton, the city of East Hampton, and the state, well, the state gets two swings at bat. Everyone else pretty much gets one swing at bat here. This deal is here. It's been waiting in the wings. If it doesn't happen, it's not going to happen, and the land will most likely be developed. You could almost be assured of that. I think another great selling point for the project is, you know, Southampton will be acquiring the fee ownership of this property, so they'll be able to do, generally, within the range of the conservation restriction, what they want to do. And they will be acquiring the parcel in fee, again, for the equivalent of one-third of what the appraised value of this property is. So, from that perspective, it is really a deal. It's really a bargain for the town to be ending up for the land for that little. But, again, I think in the future, both near and far, I think the residents of Southampton will be very grateful for your decision here tonight, or what I hope your decision will be. Sometimes it's hard to see the value of things like drinking water, but I think, once you start losing drinking water and open space in the future, it really hits hard. So, again, thank you for listening to me tonight, and I'm here for questions, and I know other people are here to speak about the project as well.
Mrs. A. Hart, do you want to speak to us? I have some questions, but I kind of want to hear the whole thing first.
Well, I'm just speaking with the funds that...
Yeah.
I'm only really able to speak about the, well, a couple of things. The Community Preservation Funds, and some of the things that were envisioned when Community Preservation Act got passed, I think about the year 2000, was that they wanted to see regional projects. They wanted to see two or three communities working. And they also wanted to see communities working with grants, accessing what grants were available. When we began, one of the very first priorities that everyone in town told us was open space. We want to preserve open space. And this piece of property hopped up immediately on our open space plan. That was one that was listed 15 or more years ago as a piece of property that needed to be looked at. Now, Mark has come to our Community Preservation Meeting once and did speak with some of the people. That committee seems to be on board. We've not taken an official vote, but my guess is that they will be on board and will want to put this forward to be on the warrant for the town meeting. We have the funds, and frankly, if I were the state people looking at community preservation and looked at funds and how they're being used, I'd look at Southampton and say, "What are you doing? Because we have $1 million." I'm not kidding. We can pay, very easily pay, one-third of this project. We should not be stockpiling that kind of money. We need to be making this money work. Yes, I know, there's another fairly large-size project out there. Don't worry about it, simply because if push comes to shove, there's money for that. And unless, and I've looked around town, and the only other great project that I can see is a renovation of the old town hall, and I don't see any movement for that right now. There might be a reason to do it, but that's the only other big project. We cannot, and in fact, maybe you remember, I kind of got my hand slapped on trying to help the safety complex, and we overstepped what we could do, and I got reprimanded from the Community Preservation Coalition. Luckily, we were able to pull it before it went onto the floor of the town meeting. But we can't do just any kind of project and simply, like I said, the only other thing, and I've heard not anyone being really concerned about a restoration of the old town hall. Maybe some of you out there are thinking about it and might want to get on the ball and begin to at least think about that, but the money is there, and we can take care of this, and if we need to, the other project that's lurking. But this project is here. It's ready to go, and I think it's, you know, time to really consider, what are we doing when there's so many other needs in town and we can't help them? What are we doing stockpiling this kind of funds? Yeah, I know we're probably, that aquifer would never become a plant in Michigan, but I think that shows you the importance of clean water and protecting what water we have.
Those were my questions. I wanted to know how much money was in there, what would happen if we paid for this, if there was money left for any other projects. I think you made that very clear.
Well, if you look at our funds, we also, in addition to the more than $1 million in our undesignated, there's open space. There's $31,000 in open space. There's also, and I need to contact a couple of people, they've got money that left from projects that have been completed.
What projects, Al?
The doors.
There's money left over from the doors?
Yeah.
Remind me, we've got to spend that money.
No, you cannot spend it. Your door project is done. You need to turn it back in.
On record, Charlie.
And I don't remember the other one, but there, and that's another $6,500.
So, the CPC hasn't had an official vote on this?
Not official.
Okay. And what about conservation permission? Have they?
They have.
And they, what was that vote?
They approved.
In support of?
Yeah.
Can we go back, and are you putting it on the CPC agenda for a vote?
For a week from Wednesday.
Okay, so...
I have not had an official project turned in until I got it tonight.
Okay. So, we'll get a vote on that soon. The other question is, Virginia, how much each year do we add to the CPC funds?
Well, the town itself funds it at almost $200,000 now.
Now, that's matched still?
There is a match, and there will be a match. I can't tell you what percentage anymore. We were getting 100% because more cities and towns have come in and because, for a while, deed transfers were down in the state. And that's where a lot of the state money is from that. The legislature has also put in some of their, exactly what you call it, surplus funds or whatever, that has, you know, added up, but we had, did not get, we got 82% this last year.
So, it's very safe to say with the 3% that we have on our tax rate plus even 50%. Every year, we bring in $300,000 to $350,000.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good to know. Thanks.
The one thing that may influence the amount that towns and cities get is that this spring, Boston is working on accepting it. Well, that's great, because that means more support from the legislature. It also means...
Boston gets a bigger job.
Matching is matching.
But they've come in late in here, so they don't get the full match, though, 3%, right?
They would, well, they would have to go to the 3%, and there is, I think, a little consideration as to when they joined.
Yeah.
But it could be, not this year, not this coming October, when we get our matching grant, but the year after that. It could mean a lower amount for the rest of us, but more support.
That could deplete the pot just by paying Boston's percent, right?
All right, so I have four questions, I think. So, whoever feels like they can answer them, please feel free to jump in. My first question is, although I understand that, you know, the master plan and the needs of the town, or the wants of the town anyway, are to conserve open space, what can the land be used for? What can the land be used for that's just sitting there and open?
You mean, once we buy it?
If we bought it.
Yes.
That is somewhat undetermined. It's based on what the natural resources value of the land are judged when it's protected, and those are laid out in the conservation restriction that East Hampton will hold. It will be affected potentially somewhat by, again, knock on wood, which grant we receive, hoping we receive one of those two grants. They also have their own individual requirements. Usually, it is some form of passive recreation. They don't want to see a lot of development on it, but that doesn't preclude something like a park. There is farming going on, and farming, I imagine, could continue. There might be some limits to, be it conventional or be it organic. It could be a community garden. I mean, there are a number of things that it really could come. But, again, it's how those, what those natural resource values are assessed to be and what is deemed as appropriate and not harmful to them.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up? So, ball fields or something like that? Would that be?
I don't believe ball fields would be. No, it'd be much more passive.
Conservation restriction that East Hampton would hold, is that a negotiable restriction upfront between us and them and the state?
It is absolutely a negotiation. There are some standards, you know, that go along with CRs with what the state has to accept, because the state ultimately has to sign off on them. And there are some general natural resource values that the state is looking to protect in every CR. So, again, those standards usually don't require, usually don't allow more active recreation that requires a lot of development, a lot of care of turf fields and things like that that would most likely preclude it.
I'm just thinking, more general, if, and I'm sure East Hampton wouldn't do that, doesn't want us to use it at all for anything, hiking, biking, nothing, at least we would have some negotiation there to come up with something reasonable.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It is absolutely negotiation with the CR holder, and from what I've discussed with them, I think they're pretty open. I mean, their obvious main concern is obviously their drinking water supply. So, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I'm kind of guessing here, I mean, a small park and playground, I mean, some nominal agriculture.
Sounds like if we're both reasonable, it would work.
Yeah, absolutely. And, again, you know, I think one of the big pluses is here that it could provide some access, again, to the wildlife management area, which has an extensive trail network to it. That could be a really nice resource for both communities to have it right there.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. A. Hart.
Sure.
Just one other thing on that. As I learned, any property that is paid for with CPA funds cannot have any structure that goes below ground. It can have things like we've got over on Strong Road, above the ground for playing fields, but there can be nothing, no digging and going underground for buildings or anything like that.
Okay. So, my next question is, I guess, in essence, if we buy this land, we're protecting East Hampton's drinking water. What does, how does that benefit Southampton? Other, and I don't mean to discredit, you know, conserving open space, that's not, I think it's important, but what do I get? What does Southampton get by buying this and having a bunch of fields?
Well, we need to definitely check with our water department. But one thing you may get is clean water during July and August, because we buy water, Southampton buys water. During the summer, when our supplies were low, this past summer, water was purchased from Southampton, for Southampton, from East Hampton. And some of our residents are on the water line and receiving water from, granted, East Hampton gets paid for it, but they are Southampton residents, and they are getting clean water. So, maybe you directly, but maybe last summer, you benefited.
So, then, my next, do you have any, do you have a follow-up?
I just have another question. I'll go after you.
Okay, so my next question, then, is if really East Hampton is benefiting more than Southampton, why are we paying more for the, why are we contributing more than East Hampton?
That was my question.
I'm on it today.
It's a great question, and I kind of view it in two ways. Number one, you'll actually be ending up with the land, which you can provide community benefits with, that East Hampton will not. They'll have, basically, a piece of paper and a lot of responsibilities, honestly. Interestingly enough, I mean, obviously, conservation restrictions are very important documents, and they do great work, but once an entity takes on a conservation restriction, they're often considered a liability, because now East Hampton is required to protect that land and monitor that land in perpetuity. So, it's a net, I mean, their drinking water is obviously benefiting from it, but now they have a sudden responsibility that they didn't have before. So, that's often the way that CRs are looked at.
What responsibility will they have? We're owning it, we have to maintain it, they just put a restriction on how we can use it. So, what responsibilities do they have?
They have a few. They have to come up with a baseline report, number one, documenting what the natural resource values are. And technically, holders of CR should monitor those CRs yearly to make sure that those conservation values are not being infringed upon. And they also, if it were a private land trust, at least, they would be taking on a fund to legally protect, you know, an endowment to legally protect that land, again, in perpetuity, if there was ever infringement on the conservation values.
But they don't have to do that in this case.
They don't, but they still would have to try and protect it. They don't have to take on the funds and kind of show their governing body, like we do, that we have the funds to protect, you know, legal defense fund in perpetuity, but they still have the responsibility to do so.
I guess I'm confused. They're going to monitor it, and if there's something not going right, they're going to come to the owners, which would be Southampton, saying, "You've got to correct this," as I understand it.
Yeah. Monitor it, and we have to pay to fix it?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And if you refuse to do so, you have, they have to take you to court, and they have to be able to do that, and so...
Can that be changed?
Can that be changed?
Is that something that's negotiable?
There's some wording in the language, yeah, that can be changed.
I guess...
In terms of liability for infringements upon a conservation restriction, yeah, the language can be worked out.
I guess, and tell me if I'm not thinking what you're thinking, but who negotiated this fee, and can it be changed and renegotiated?
The fee for...
The split between the towns.
It could be split.
Who came up with this?
Honestly, I was coming up with it, basically, by the general heuristic that everyone wanted to pay around a third. And in my conversations with East Hampton, what would potentially fly before their Community Preservation Committee, they said $300,000 is probably the cap. They said anything above that, you're starting to get into an area where it may very well be rejected. So, we were trying to kind of keep, yeah, trying to keep it generally even.
I know it's a question that I'm going to ask out loud, and I don't want it to sound wrong, but if we didn't do this and somebody built 12 houses on it, how would that affect East Hampton's water?
It creates another liability for them. I mean, nothing is guaranteed, but obviously, how the homeowners treat their properties and things that happen on their properties could obviously, you know...
So, this is important land for East Hampton?
It is important land for East Hampton. I mean, unfortunately, they've built on a lot of their aquifer land already, and I think they're trying to reverse that. Well, they can't really reverse it, but they're really looking at the land that's remaining. Again, this is the sole source area for them. It's not just any part of the aquifer. I mean, they get, the majority of their water drains in from this area, and if it is ultimately contaminated, they don't have a readily, ready second supply to go to from here.
I guess it's a question, I know I shouldn't ask, but I'm going to, because it sounds like they built on a lot of their aquifer over there, now they want us to protect our aquifer for their water supply. Is that accurate, just to get it out there?
It's a good question, yeah. I mean, a lot of it has been, a lot of their aquifer has been built on. I think the fact that they are coming to the table now realizes that, you know, their priorities may be changing, and they are certainly looking at land in their town as well to protect. I know that.
So, there may be room for discussion with them.
I was going to say, my first point would be that there needs to be some discussion in those numbers, so, all right, so now let me ask this question.
Sure.
And maybe nobody here will have the answer, but a few months ago, we talked about plowing roads and how much it costs to plow roads and how much it costs to supply water to towns in Southampton. So, if we built 12 houses, does the tax that's brought in and the services that it's going to cost and to maintain, is it worth building those 12 houses, or is it not? Because if you're not going to bring in enough money to cover those costs...
Do you know that?
Then we're sitting right here doing exactly what we told ourselves not to do a few months ago.
Okay. Houses cost, a few years ago, and I haven't seen the latest figures, open space agricultural and commercial, commercial and industrial pay their way and more than pay their way. A few years ago, the cost for every dollar brought in from a house cost this town $1.41. One child who comes into the Norris School will more than cost what these houses will bring in unless their annual tax rate is over $5,000.
Okay.
One special-needs child can bankrupt us, not literally, but it can really hurt. And you don't charge people extra because they have a special-needs child that has to have a lot of services. And like I said, I don't know the latest figures, but that was really before the big building crush and when we still were able to go to a town meeting, an annual town meeting, and ask the public to pass, at least look at and consider a budget that wasn't level-funded. This year, again, we're saying level fund, and I happen to know that one of the things that could happen to the Norris School budget is one special-needs child that's not in the school now that will be. And, you know, we don't want to really talk about saving money by not letting people move in town, but it's not a paying game.
Okay. I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, now, I guess I would just like to know what the Gwinners want. What is, what is it that would, you know, not that I'm going to give you what you want, but I'm just curious. What would be, and I'm happy to hear, but you have to come to the microphone. I think I know what you might say, but...
Richard Gwinner, 25 Gilbert Road. My aunt died 27 years ago. That was my grandparents' house. We've sat on the land for 27 years. We've refused many offers by developers. They want to buy the farmhouse, they want to buy the 30 acres. We want to see it preserved. We're taking a lot less money by preserving it than we'll get if we put it on the open market. You mentioned 12 new houses. Well, last year, they changed the zoning over there. It's not going to be 12, it's going to be at least 14, and along with that, every 10 building lots now, one of them has to be low-income. I don't want to get into that, but all the family members are willing to take less for the land just to leave it the way it is. We want to preserve it.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the Board? Questions from the board?
I just, I was going to say, I just want to make a quick observation, again, one of those probably not popular, but when the, the split was negotiated, from what you said, Mark, is that you went to East Hampton and found out what their tolerance level was, which was $300,000, then you backed into what East Hampton had to pay, which seems to be backwards to me a little bit. Should have sat down with both the towns, because now our tolerance level has to be whatever their tolerance level isn't, which I don't know if that's going to be our level or not. So I'm just a little concerned about that.
You know, it's an interesting question, and part of it, and luckily, let me say, particularly because of the bargain sale, there is some room to play with the numbers more now, because again, before we were butting up against no town can pay for, over the appraised value, obviously. Now we're operating under the appraised value of the property. It gives us a lot more leeway. You know, I, I think, again, it's a question of phasing and a question of timing, and it's a hard thing to guess. East Hampton votes after Southampton does. So we're kind of trying to structure the project in a way that it might have its best chance of success. We could certainly up and make it almost even between the, directly even between the communities. I can see how I can do it. Would that increase the risk, the chance that East Hampton might vote it down? It might. It's, it's hard to know. It's really hard to know. They have a new, basically, I think they lost three members of their community preservation committee, so they have three new members. We don't really know what their voting record is and what their philosophy is going to be. So again, it's all a gamble. A lot of cards have to fall together for this to work. Again, the two communities voting and the state coming through with funding. So we're trying to build up, you know, the structure as much as we can, and there's a lot of unknowns there.
There's two sticking points for me.
I was going to say, do they have CPA money too? East Hampton?
Yes, but I've just got a couple. First of all, some people from this community were involved in all the meetings. Heather was there, Marla from Conservation, and I was there. So it isn't like that just East Hampton said, "This is what-"
Tolerance level is, yeah.
And, and we did make changes as things came up. One of the things was that East Hampton would own the land. And I said, "On that, we can forget it."
Right.
If Southampton doesn't, has, doesn't own the land. The other thing is that, number one, I have no idea, I have not watched what East Hampton has for community preservation funds. They are, even though I think they're at 3%, and they came in fairly early, I have a feeling that they have been doing more big ticket items and probably don't have the money that we have. Not that that should make a big difference, but I think that may be one of the reasons that they're kind of capping it. Because I know some of their money went in through the affordable housing to the Parsons community that they built for affordable housing. Actually, if we could figure out how to do affordable housing without building a new house over there, we would have an additional $200,000 to use. That's what our housing authority has. But we can't do that. And so I, I'm not sure they have the money available. I don't know that for sure. But that's just kind of my guess in watching what comes and goes in the different communities. And I don't think, you know, I, I'm not sure even what their percentage is. I will go back and say that we did work with them on a very low-ticket item with this city of Holyoke to preserve some land over there. And again, the aquifer was a concern.
So there's two sticking points for me. One, that we're talking about our contribution compared to East Hampton's. And second, if they hold the conservation restriction and all they have to do is, you know, the baseline reporting and the monitoring, if something happens, I don't want to be stuck with that bill, or whatever that may be. So if there's some room for movement in those two things, then I probably, I probably would be in support.
I would have to look at the conservation restriction language, and I can check as early as tomorrow with our attorney and see if the liability can be pushed around or whether that's a pretty standardized thing.
Okay.
I don't have enough experience with, to at least tweaking that language to know. And again, you know, I was going, going on good faith testament, testimony, you know, I, no one came to me from East Hampton and said, "It can only be this, this is our demands." I was working with someone there that I've known for years, and I kind of asked that person, "What do you think do, what do you think East Hampton will do?" And she said, "Okay, this is where the project funding goes." They spend a decent, this would be the most, I believe, they've spent on a land protection project, especially one where they don't actually acquire the land, where they just get a document out of it. They spend a lot of money on their redevelopment, you know, of their old mill buildings, there was a big ticket item there, and also on dredging their ponds out. Those are often $300,000 to $400,000 projects, and they've funded several of those. So again, it's trying to thread the needle and kind of just trying to figure out what our, what our odds are going forward. We're kind of trying to play the odds with this a little bit, because it, it's rare. Again, you know, I know Virginia said, I think the ideal is that communities work together on these projects. Speaking with the head of the Community Preservation Coalition, he said they have seen a number of projects, a small number of projects where communities work together, but they're rare because they're complicated. So many things have to work out, so much, so much approval needs to be got from different bodies and, you know, different residents, and the processes are different in each town. It makes it very hard to go through. So the fact that we actually have a plan that could work on the table for such a high-ticket item, I, I think is great progress and, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I personally like the project, so that's not an issue there. I like the idea, I mean, if there's some way we can split it, because we have to sell this to our town meeting, our voters, and if they say no, whole project's going down the tubes, because you need us and we need them. So, you know, if there was a split, more of a split, I'd be fine. And Virginia was saying they spend a lot of their money on other projects like dredging, Nashwannik Pond, which looks great, get my ice cream right next door. But I can't imagine they're going to let the aquifer grow for 25, $50,000. I mean, we're talking water versus somebody boating. So my, my sense is, you know, they'll work with us to sell it to both our towns, city and town. I think that's what we need to do.
Charlie?
Very bluntly, there's too many moving parts in this thing to keep this sorted, to make a rational decision at this point in time. I'm very concerned about depleting the CPA money. We have other projects that are going to be coming down. When you bring up the issue of the Old Town Hall and renovations, the Board of Selectmen is moving forward now to activate the Public Safety Building Committee again. If that committee starts moving forward, that committee is going to start looking at basically moving the police department out of the Old Town Hall, which is going to trigger us doing something with the Old Town Hall. And then we have the mystery building, the old fire station. That needs to be addressed also. Protecting East Hampton's water supply is a great goal. I have no problem with that. But for us to own property that a neighboring community has restrictions on, yet we are the owner of a property that if something goes wrong, we become liable for whatever that area of problem is, I would never encourage the town to purchase it in that regard.
Could I respond to just a few of those?
Yes.
Number one, I, I would respectfully disagree with the moving parts assessment. I, I mean, we have the appraisal now, we're on more solid ground, I think, now than this project ever has been in the last few years. And the course forward is pretty straight, actually. Yes, things have to happen and we have to have, make positive progress over the course of the year. But even as I presented the structure of the project to the state and I said, "Look, I was going for some," I would have hoped to come up with something that was more elegant and simple. And this representative from the state grant program said, "No, trust me. People who know all the hoops that you need to jump through to meet this state's requirements, sometimes the more complex the deal is, more reassuring from the state's part, because it shows that you're meeting the requirements that have been put out there." So again, I have had good feedback from the state on that. And again, you know, I think the project is absolutely set to move forward in that respect. You know, also, and, you know, drinking water is an interesting issue, and aquifers are drinking, an interesting issue. Yes, the situation with who gets water from what parts of the aquifer exists now as it does. But this aquifer is under all these towns, and four towns draw water from it. Who knows what the water situation is going to be in the future? The health of the aquifer in general, I think, benefits all towns. It's an assurance for all towns, regardless of where the wells currently are. And that's what I would, how I would respond to that.
Okay.
And, good, Patty.
My name is Patty Gamburini. I'm with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Facilitate the Barnes-Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee. And I want to thank Mark. I had worked with the Gwinner family and Winding River Land Conservancy for more than a year, trying to figure out how to make this deal come together. And when Kestrel Land Trust stepped in, they were able to look at what we were trying to do and really come up with, I, I think is a, a good workable solution. And the hope was that Southampton would see the great value in protecting open space, East Hampton would get drinking water protection, and there would be a sharing of resources. Mark started to talk about the Barnes-Aquifer, and yes, all four communities collaborate through Bay PAC and have since the 1980s to protect drinking water supply. I was authorized to work on this project before, when I was trying to pull things together. And then the committee reauthorized me a couple of months ago to continue working to try to help Mark explain what this protection means for both communities. So I think Mark is doing a good job. And yeah, I think, you know, if there's levels of discomfort in terms of how the equation lays out now, that, you know, there's opportunity to talk about that. But I, I know the Barnes-Aquifer Committee really supports this project and hopes it can move forward.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I could add just one more thing real quick, just to let you know kind of- What would be a next step if this does move forward in the town of Southampton? So far, much of my time has been taken up just working out the project and how it would go forward and working out the numbers. If it is going to go forward, I am prepared to launch into basically, you know, an outreach campaign to residents of Southampton to explain the project. And that could happen very soon, as in the beginning of next week. Start bringing together the talking points, start putting together public presentations, start putting together press releases. So of course, it would be explained to town residents, as best as all the people who have been involved so far can pull together the argument and the narrative for the project.
So you're willing to do all that?
Yes, absolutely. It's one of our top projects on my workload right now, so I would take that on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. How's the board wish to proceed? Oh, Mr. Keener, last one.
Kyle Keener, County Road. I just got one question. Is there a drop dead date on this to, that it has to be accepted or rejected?
Sure. We are been, we've been able to extend the project right now through the graciousness of the family who signed an option with us, which I believe actually expired. Did it expire technically, or is it set to expire in April?
April 1st.
So they have given us a bit of time to, you know, let the project run its course, particularly implying to the grant programs and getting, you know, the acceptance from both towns. Basically, if this does not happen on schedule, and I have a bit of this, you know, the schedule of the votes and the grant deadlines on the handout that I gave to you, basically, if we don't hit all those marks in the order that they are and not the date that they are, the project will not likely go forward.
Okay.
I, I think the family is at the end of their patience, and they've been very patient so far with this, so. And again, the, the votes and how they have to go, particularly with Southampton voting first at town meeting, and then East Hampton, the soonest they'd be able to vote would be June 2nd. And then amongst those times, right after that, actually, we would have to get the grant applications in with the state to get their decision by the fall. So again, it has to go pretty much in that order.
Okay.
And in my opinion, I think, I live close by to that area, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to maintain and keep that open space. And I think the town would be remiss in not doing their, what they're here for if the, this didn't get put on the warrant for the town meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to move forward. How does the board wish to proceed?
I put a motion together, it may be choppy, so let me see what I can do here. So I'm going to make a motion to support the purchase contingent on coming to terms on three issues. One is the, the purchase price. Second is the liability of the land once we purchase it. And the third is on the conservation restrictions. So agreement by East Hampton and Southampton, and also contingent upon receiving the grant for $400,000. So that's a key piece. So my motion is so that we'll go ahead with it, and we just need to negotiate certain points before it's finalized.
The mo, there's a motion on the floor to support the, there's a, there's a motion on the floor to support the purchase of the Cook County Road Gwinner property contingent on, contingent on-
Three issues.
Agreement with East Hampton on three issues. One, the purchase price. Two, receiving the grant. And three, the liability and conservation restriction.
No, that's not quite correct.
Why?
The, the three items were the purchase price, the liability, and the conservation restrictions, and it's also contingent upon-
And also contingent upon receiving the grant.
-receiving the grant of 400,000.
Sorry.
If I could just add in right there, does it have to be the 400,000? Because there are two grants that we're applying through. And again, the land grant is the first grant that we would apply to and hear from. The second one would be the drinking water protection grant and the cap. The maximum for the drinking water is 350. We're hoping for the land, but-
The issue is, if we go to town meeting and ask for X, and it's X plus, we're kind of stuck. We've got to go back. So if we say we want 325-
Does the 361 that is on your paper, is that taking into account the $400,000 grant or the-
That's taking into account the $400,000 grant. So I would technically ask, go to the next table. That's for the drinking water supply grant of the 386, 862, 50. That would be, if we got the lesser amount, so than anything else, if we got the bigger grant, the amount the town would pay would go down.
Fair enough.
Would be lesser.
So we'd have to ask the town for, the town, the city and the town, a total of 50,000 more, whatever the split is. And if it was, we got the extra 50,000, we would just prorate it back to the city and the town?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
So I would say, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I could amend my motion on, for the 350.
Did you get that?
No.
All right, well, we have it written down. So one sec, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Second for discussion, Mrs. Aheart. You can go next.
We always write the warrant articles up two.
Yep.
Yeah.
And with the understanding that if up two doesn't hap, you know, if it's below that, that money is returned.
Yes.
That just, you know, to clarify.
Thank you.
Just because we're splitting it with East Hampton, I want to make sure we're clear, because they may have to come in a little more on theirs too.
Yeah, that's fine. But what I'm saying is that we would write it up two.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Heather?
If I could just add one, my question, in fact, and Virginia might be able to clarify this as well. Because both of these grants are reimbursement grants from the state, do we have to actually ask for the full amount prior to reimbursement or not? And that would be 700,000. Obviously contingent upon getting the grant, I, I'm not sure about-
Virginia, my, my fault.
What has happened in the past when we've had, when we've been waiting for grants here, is that the treasurer usually takes a short term.
Yep, okay.
So that our funds don't have to-
So I think we can work out the logistics of how we ask for this money, but really, we need to decide whether we're going to be in support of it or we're not going to be in support of it. And the logistics of when the grant comes, how the grant comes, and how we ask for the money can be worked out after. Heather?
Yes, just really briefly. So we've been working on this project for a very, I don't even know how long at this point, Mark. The biggest thing that we really need at this point is just to know if the Board of Selectmen is supportive of this.
Is supportive or not?
At the last meeting, we talked about, you know, we have all of our plans, all of our steps, how to do outreach and everything else, as far as putting together an FAQ sheet with a lot of the questions the board asked tonight and other questions to go to the residents. But the biggest key question, and Mark and I had a conversation with others in the room on this, I would think a week or two ago, was if the Board of Selectmen is not behind this, it doesn't make sense to move forward, because you, you folks represent the town and you're going to be, you know-
because you, you folks represent the town and you're going to be, you know, standing there behind the town. We have to have one or two bodies who present this to the CPC in our town as the department lead on this project. So we, at that point, were thinking the Water Department and the Board of Selectmen jointly. But again, it made no sense if the Board of Selectmen was not behind it. A lot of these issues can be worked out. As far as the split thing goes, I'm sorry, I was a little bit behind on this piece, but one of the things that came up was just as, you know, Liz, you had pointed out, we're going to pay for property that benefits East Hampton. Well, Mark pointed out, they're going to pay for a piece of paper. So there's a hard sell on both sides of the thing that essentially have the potential to benefit both sides, but it really needs to be conveyed by that. The reason the one-third, one-third came up was the original grant funding through the land grant required a third contribution for each of the towns and then the other third from the land grant. That's where the third originated from. And I think the amount really came from, you know, what they thought they were able to come up with on that piece. But it's, it's a hard sell all around. Essentially, what I really need from the Board tonight is to tell me if they wish for me to continue working on this project and for everyone else to continue working on this project, or if they're all set. We just need a direction if we're going for, I think we can easily address all of these issues and keep the Board updated.
Think we got it.
There's a motion on the floor and there's a second. Is the Board ready to vote or do they have further questions? The Board.
Well, I have a comment.
Okay.
We are a five-member Board, missing two, which makes it difficult to anticipate what the other two members are going to vote or direct at a town meeting. That said, I'm ready to vote.
Well, I just, can I comment on this comment?
Unless it's directly related to the motion, then you.
Then I'll hold my comment.
Okay. So if the Board's ready to vote, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes three to two in support of the project moving.
Two to one.
Two to one, sorry. You have to think about five other people.
I've looked both ways.
The motion passes two to one in support of the project. So thank you, everybody, for coming in.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Let's move forward. We're going to move into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct collective bargaining sessions. We will be returning to open session when we are completed with that. We're back at eight, at 8:37. Welcome back. Let's see. I'm going to go to the reports from the Norris School Committee because I know that's what Mrs. Aheart is waiting for. Before you start, and I know what you're going to say, do you need a decision from us about this tonight?
On what I say?
On busing? Are you going to talk about?
No.
Okay.
We do not have.
You don't have an answer from your school?
We do not have a recommendation. I'm mainly here to test the waters, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Test away. I'll let you know what I think.
Okay. We're meeting tomorrow night and we had a discussion of the, well, two, there were two parts of it. The busing because we're, we had had, or there were parents complaining about safety on the buses with the changed routes. And that's an easy one to deal with. Some of the parents apparently, or the word was that it wasn't safe because they had too many children on the bus and, you know, all that stuff. And the vice principal checked the arrivals on each bus and the departures on each bus and determined there was only one route that might be in question. And apparently, it's a little bit of a strange route. But it was decided at this point of the year not to ask them to make a change. There were, that number was high 40s and even a couple of times 51.
Was that route one that was consolidated or was it a, a different route altogether?
It's, it's, I don't think it was one that was consolidated.
Was the route that was, from the beginning of the year, was not one that had students added to it?
It may have. I'm not sure of that. It was?
It was a consolidated one?
But it has a strange route too and loops past some other places and everything. But the fact is that they, the decision was made, enough changes had been made not to do it this year, but to recommend next year that that not happened. That was one issue. There seemed to be concern, some of the parents were fussing about the school choice, people being picked up in a couple of places. But they don't seem to be adding, and they are paying the fee to ride the bus even though they're further away than the two miles. I don't know whether they just wanted to blame them for changes or what. But the question came up, of course, about making a recommendation on the refund for the parents. We have not made a formal decision as far as a recommendation to you. We will be doing that tomorrow. But the question that I was to ask you was that if our recommendation were for the funds not to be refunded, because this is for a service, the state says is a service for those families, they paid for the service and they are continuing to receive the, the But with a request that funds at the end of the year, transfer funds would be made so that the school, I guess sort of in a trade-off, would have the money that they need to fully pay the, the, the fine from the state for net school spending. Because that was not completely paid. Now, that, that was, that is what we are discussing and we needed input. I think somebody went to the Finance Committee and that was to, asking them what they thought. And they wanted someone to come here and because I am your liaison, I said I would bring it to you.
So I have a fully thought out, complete opinion on this situation, which I have shared probably with numerous people, including the superintendent. So before I state that opinion, I'd be happy to hear from the rest of the Board.
I don't see the practicality of doing the reimbursement. I just don't see it's going to work.
I, I think technically, we don't have to give it back, but from a practical point of view, I've had several people talk to me saying that they thought it was a fair thing to do. So I think from a fair point of view, I would think we should give it back if there's a way that we can do it without causing a lot of time and effort on somebody's part because they deserve it, I think. And the 250 or 450, whatever the max number is, a lot of money to a lot of people, in my opinion.
Are you ready?
Okay.
We're ready. And a fully thought out opinion.
So first, I'll start with school choice kids. I think regardless of whether or not the transportation line is funded wholly or not, school choice students should have to pay to ride the bus because that's a service that we're providing. I think even if we're not charging Southampton students, school choice students should be charged. That's one. Two, I will say shame on me for not knowing that the transportation line item was fully funded from the beginning. Because had I recognized that fact, then perhaps the conversation about charging Southampton residents for busing would have been had in July or August or even now as opposed to right now. B, C, whatever letter I'm on, C. From a practical standpoint and a fair standpoint, it does not make sense to me, and I don't think it's right, to take the money that was overcharged to the transportation item and give it to the town or give it back to the school. I think that that money needs to go back to parents. $250, $450 is a lot of money to some families. And I don't think, in my own opinion, it's a donation to the town or to the school. That's not what they intended their money to be spent on. They intended their money to be spent on the bus to take their children to school. I also think that if the town did not fully fund the school to 100% of net school spending, the overage in the transportation line item should not be used to do that. We need to find the money in the Southampton budget, like we should have in the beginning, to fully fund the school at 100% of net school funding. So if you were asking my own opinion, and I would tell you, give the money back to the families, figure out what to do with, with the transportation money from the school choice kids. That, I feel, could go into the, into the Norris budget next year. Is that everything? Give the money back. Give the money back to the families because it's not mine to spend and I don't think it's the schools to spend either.
Okay, I will convey these ideas.
Go ahead, Heather.
I, I was just going to clarify two things. The first one, net school spending, we did fund net school spending to 100% this year to the best of our abilities.
Absolutely.
And same thing last year.
The same way we always do.
The problem we ran into and the thing that I think the Board needs to be apprised of and aware of, because this is where it becomes monitoring a department head and the school in general, is the fact that we have something called indirect costs. And the indirect costs vary. I have no control on this side.
I don't disagree with you and I'm not saying that anybody did a bad job in, in estimating, but we need to make up the difference.
But I guess what I'm just trying to say is to avoid this in the future and to also be cognizant that that's where we ran into a problem with not meeting net school spending was our indirect costing calculate. So we need to stay on top of what our monthly indirect cost calculations are moving forward.
Fair enough. I don't disagree with you, but I don't think it's the parents who paid for busing's responsibility to make up the difference that we weren't able to figure out.
But on the second thing with the school busing thing, if I'm not mistaken, when the room was slightly set up different and I was at the podium over there by that window last year when we had the meeting with the school department, we went through this whole piece with whether or not they were charging for busing or not. And that was discussed. So just, I, I know sometimes things get confused and no one really remembers where things were with stuff, but we did discuss this. You know, everyone was on the same page at the time that there was going to be a fee charge, that transportation was fully funded at that time, to the best of my knowledge. Maybe I was hallucinating, always possible, it happens sometimes. But if you check that meeting from last year when we did the school presentation and I was standing over there on the budget, I recall saying something to that like.
Fair enough.
Do you need, want a motion to back this up for the school committee?
I think that it would, I think it would be helpful so that we're not going back and forth. I mean, if we have a motion of support or not of support going into the school committee meeting, it's going to make it easier for them to not have to come back again, I guess is my point.
Okay.
So, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we reimburse the parents that contributed the additional funds for the busing.
Is there a second for discussion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? There's a motion made by John Martin on the floor to support the reimbursement of overpayments on transportation bills to parents.
And I will bring the other comments.
Thank you.
I do want to, I just have a couple of little statistics that I want to point out. Well, first of all, the school committee has really, they haven't formalized it, but they said they would not think of charging parents again. And I think that's fair. That's my own personal opinion. I did look up the, the figures on net school spending for the whole state, 350 schools. It is dismal from our standpoint. Thirteen failed to pay their net school spending. We were one of them and we were one of the highest ones not to pay originally our net school spending. I was unable to find the website that gives us per pupil cost. The last time I saw it, we were number 349. For this town, I think that is absolutely deplorable. And I'm going to take, I'm just going to say this. I don't think, I think part of the problem in this town is that the schools have not communicated well with the rest of the town. They, there are so many, and one being, having been in one of the schools for 27 years, I know this is true. There's a lot of rumors that fly. And they're not, a lot of them are not true. And I am going to kind of, if I am elected to a one-term, I am going to try to work to, one, have concerns of the school committee brought to you on a regular basis so that at least those watching the meetings will know. And in some way, try to figure out a way to present the school to the public, not as your biggest expense on that big tax bill, but look at what you're getting. Because that, I mean, the other day, I heard that every teacher, every single teacher has at least one paraprofessional with her all the time to help teach the class. That isn't true. I know that isn't true. And I said, wait a minute, just go and check the numbers. Oh, no, no, they know. And then the kids with special needs had their own para that follows them around all day. The school's filled with paras. No. We have them when we need them. And they, if a, if a teacher does not have a student with a need for them being in the room, they're not in the room at that time. I mean, I know that. But there are people out there who really believe and really strange ideas about who these are and what they're doing. And that's just one example of where the town's public, the people, even if they've got children in school, don't always understand where that money goes.
Right.
So that's my goal.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second on the floor to support the reimbursement of transportation funds. Is there any discussion from the Board? All those in favor of reimbursing tuition, being in support of reimbursing tuition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Open time for the public. Mrs. Willonis? Really? Nothing? You're kidding me?
Where's George?
George left. Does anybody have any select board issues, comments, discussions they would like to discuss? Or would you prefer to move on to the pile of PCFs that I have in front of me?
Where do we have for reconstruction of the complex or Safety Committee?
I don't have that.
We are waiting for a meeting in which it is not nine o'clock by the time we get to item four.
I sent you a draft of what the roles and responsibilities are.
Yep, that's it.
And yeah, it's too late tonight to get into them.
All right, moving on, we have some PCFs, an appointment, I'm going to go in order of the pile in front of me, actually. We have one, two, three, four PCFs for Michael Fire, Fire?
Fair.
Fair? Well, Michael F. As an EMT, we have two emergency PCFs, one new and one part, one standby. These have all been signed off by the PQB and the Finance Committee. I would accept a motion to sign them.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You also have a PCF for. You also have a PCF for the, let me see if I get this right, for John Arache, my favorite police officer in all of Southampton, from part-time to full-time.
He hadn't said that.
From part-time to full-
You must realize you put that out to the public. That's your bias.
From part-time to full-time employee, part-time to full-time police officer, effective on April 1st, 2016. It's been signed off by the department head, the town accountant, the Finance Committee Chair, and the PQB. I would accept a motion to enthusiastically.
I enthusiastically make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a PCF for election worker Jody Corey on an as-needed basis and also for Ann Chapdeline on an as-needed basis to work elections. I would accept a motion to sign those.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I, aye. And I also have a PCF for a temporary emergency part-time position in the assistant town, as the assistant town clerk. Also, all signatures are there.
Is that emergency?
I hope that's emergency.
Temporary.
Temporary, sorry. Well, emergency checked off, so maybe so she could start right away.
No, she hasn't started.
Oh, starting April 4th for five weeks. So that part is.
Is this because somebody's out?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would accept a motion to sign that.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no PRFs. Our next, let's see. We have to talk about the annual town warrant. So on the annual town election warrant, there are three items that we need to discuss. One, the annual town elections, which are on?
May.
May, may, may.
The first one, May 2nd.
May 2nd. Next, are you looking for approval from us, Heather, on these?
No, I don't have a formally put together.
You just want to talk about them?
But you need to just, I mean, the first piece is a given. You don't have a choice.
Okay, so next, we've got to talk about the two-and-a-half override for the fire ambulance at $135,000. You still want to put together a warrant article for that?
Yes.
We voted to do that.
Yes.
And next is, and I had the paper somewhere. So as you know, I'm an advocate for changing the position of treasurer from elected to appointed, have been, always will be. But at the last town, annual town meeting where that passed, it was then voted on at the override election. However, that is not the correct way to do things. If this passes at an annual town meeting, it needs to actually go on an annual town election ballot. So given the fact that we're still within the timeframe, I am asking for a motion to support putting the treasurer's position from elected to appointed on the annual election ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just the annual election ballot.
So in which case, if it passes at the annual town election, this position would then go from elected to appointed. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. I would accept a motion to read the payroll warrants if someone would like to read them or I can do it.
Sure, I'll read them. Got them there? Warrant.
Oh, you have a whole pile. Okay, I'll start signing.
W-16 hyphen 38, date 3/17/2016. Amount $88,661.60. Warrant P-16 hyphen 39, date 3/24/2016. Warrant PD-16 hyphen 39, date March 24th, 2016. Amount $40,741.43. Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next meeting is on, well, I had Mark.
Approval minutes, what do you want?
Oh, sorry. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th, which was a joint Board of Selectmen and PQB meeting, as well as March 8th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, our next meeting is April 5th. Are you sure it's not April 29th?
You want to meet April 29th, which is a month.
I'm sorry, March 29th, but if you-
I'm, so we originally penciled in March 29th for review of the budget. The budget's not in the spot for the Board to review yet.
So you're going to wait three weeks before we meet again?
Well, it's two weeks. Because next week is the 29th, the week after is April 7th.
Oh, sorry, you went, okay. Our next meeting, moving on. Our next meeting is April 5th and then April 19th. We have a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, which you all need to take your Google quiz to see when we're all available.
I think I'm the only one that responded.
I responded.
I did not respond, so I will do that tomorrow.
I need a third Board member to actually have enough humans.
Okay, so you tell me what the best dates are.
If this loads, I'll get back to you in a second.
Okay, we have an upcoming hearing on a traffic light for Route 10 and Palmroy Meadow Road on April 5th.
Yes, anybody that wants to be heard about that should come in for that meeting.
So I would suggest, because I know this is a hot-button topic with parents, especially those who walk to Subway in half-days. So any parents that are listening or listening and want to share on Facebook, because that's the best way to meet parents, to tell folks that there is a hearing on putting a traffic light at the intersection of Route 10 and Palmroy Meadow Road. It would be beneficial to either have, A, letters of support from folks or your presence in this room. The Public Safety Committee and members and their mission, they're going to be talking about that on April 5th. Budget meeting is not on March 29th. I'm sure Heather will tell me when that is. Budget.
It says March 29th.
We're still working on it. As of right now, the Finance Committee and the Finance team are looking to meet at night on a Thursday on, I think it's April 7th.
So where it says, "Public meeting on budget, April 12th", is that still true or is that going to be?
That's also likely to move. We just need to figure out where we're going with things. At this point, we've had most of the budgets submitted and we're in the process of reviewing and coming up with rules to apply across the Board and also trying to figure out how to look at the requests of the Board of Selectmen of the things they wish to see funded in their priority lists and see how to calculate those numbers in.
Okay. Then that makes the annual town election on May 2nd and the annual town meeting on May 17th. At this point, we're going to move into executive session, not to return to open session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 6, to consider the purchase or exchange of real estate property under Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining under Number 1, to discuss physical condition of an individual, and to approve executive minutes. By roll call, vote please.
Martin, aye.
Polls and aye.
Aye.